...inhabitants of this place, the Shtehopes people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the February 21st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting?
I move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Abstain.
Commissioner Finch?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any reports from our commissioners? Okay, I'll just share that I had an opportunity to meet with a community member, Mr. Mohammed of Plutus Development, and he wanted to have some discussion around a couple of things that the commission has taken up, specifically with our ADU recommendations, the exemption of the UR4 land use spaces. And so we spent some time discussing that, and I really wanted to understand why that was a problem for him. And really what it comes down to is parking, the parking requirements for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes versus ADU parking regulations that we recommended for the ADUs. So I did let Mr. Mohammed know that that issue is going to go before the council, and it will probably not return to this commission, and encouraged him to reach out to them to let them know what his concerns were. But I wanted you all to be aware that there was discussion in the community about that. The other point of discussion was with regard to the MFTE program that we discussed in February. There was one specific concern about the potential to increase the minimum from four units required under the RCW to, I think it was proposed as, I don't recall exactly what it was proposed to increase it to, just off the top of my head. But our current threshold, I think, is eight, and there was a proposal to increase it beyond that. And so that was another point of concern that Mr. Mohammed shared that I wanted to let you all know about. So thank you, Mr. Mohammed, for taking that time to have those discussions and to present that information to us. And to the public, we very much appreciate your comments and you reaching out and letting us know when you do have concerns, because it really does help us have a broader perspective on the work we're doing. Okay, staff comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Chatters. Good evening, Commission. Good to be here this evening. Following up on your comment, we did have an open public comment come in from Ishmael Mohammed just now. We'll make sure that we get copies of that comment to you. He requested that it be read in the meeting. I think that worked last time because there were some technical difficulties that prevented. But otherwise, I don't think we want to get in the habit of reading written comments at every meeting. So we'll make sure that you get the content of it in email form as soon as possible. It does relate to the same topics that you were mentioning. We have a nomination for an appointment to the one vacant seat on the Planning Commission. Mackenzie Sullivan, who is actually in the audience today, will be nominated, and that nomination will come before the City Council at tomorrow's meeting for their confirmation. Mackenzie lives in the Silver Lake neighborhood. We're excited to broaden the geographic reach of this planning commission south of the SR526 freeway. That was one of our goals with this position, and one of the statutory requirements is to seek geographic and other forms of diversity on the commission. So we're excited to have her with. Don't want to get ahead of ourselves with the council confirmation process yet to occur. So I think we'll do a formal introduction at the next meeting, assuming that all goes forward. But good to know that we have some movement on that vacancy there. We have kept you up to date with the light rail extension planning process over the months that that's been going on. We just passed an important public comment period, and it was the scoping period that will... The scoping period was a public participation and outreach process to inform eventually board decision of which alternatives for stations, alignments, and the operations and maintenance facility will advance into the environmental impact statement process for environmental review and narrow down the field of potential stations and alignments. The city of Everett participated in this process by attending some outreach meetings and definitely talking with members of the community, other agencies, and Sound Transit throughout this process. We also sent a scoping comment letter into the formal record for the light rail extension, and those are at your table for your perusal. The next step with that is a community advisory group meeting on March 29th, where the results from the scoping, I believe nearly 2,000 comments were received, maybe even more than that, by Sound Transit. So they're digesting and going to be bringing that into a scoping comment report that the community advisory group and then the elected leadership group, which is made up of elected representatives from the cities and the county along the line. And then ultimately, the Sound Transit Board will make a decision again on which station and alignment alternatives to move forward into the EIS process. So you can take a look at that scoping letter when you have a moment. I also attached, the mayor delivered a state of the city address about a week and a half ago, and associated with that were the issuance of five mayoral directives. I have three of them here I've shared with you all for your perusal there, too. Two of them on behavioral health and gun violence. Planning is very interdisciplinary, and it feels like there's almost no area of public policy that we don't get involved in. But I thought at least we could maybe draw the line at those two issues and leave most of the work to our colleagues in other departments. But these three, housing choices for all, prosperous city, and climate action and sustainability have direct bearing on the comprehensive plan update and on the work of the Planning Department and the Planning Commission. So I thought it was worth sharing where the mayor's priorities are in those issues right now, and we'll be incorporating that into our work program on a staff level. And so you can expect to hear more about the issues that are addressed in these mayoral directives over the coming years. I also want to thank and congratulate Steve Inglesby, our Land Use Planning Manager, for 30 and a little bit years of service to the city. He's retiring this month. Well-deserved rest from work. He's seen an amazing amount of change in the city, and he's played a part in it from starting working at the permit counter, 30 in 1990s, all the way to being Land Use Planning Manager, which oversees all of the land use permit approvals for all of the development in the city. He's got an encyclopedic knowledge of the land, of the regulations, and of the planning process. And it's going to be tough to fill those shoes. Kelsey Hyde will be the new Land Use Planning Manager, is already, as a matter of fact. So we'll be going through a period of transition there, and it'll be tough to lose the institutional knowledge that Steve has. But we wish him well. It sounds already like he's got some fun activities lined up. So thank you, Steve, for all of your service. And I think that's all I've got here. As always, if you have any questions, be happy to take them.
So I did a quick peruse of the Sound Transit, the letter to Sound Transit regarding the siding of the stations. I may have missed it, so I apologize if I asked. But do we talk, do we go into detail what we expect the stations to look like? Are we looking and anticipating kind of the traditional, what they previously be done, which I consider rather inefficient, which is just a station? Or are we looking at combined station and, you know, vertical housing on top of it? Over.
You're right that this letter does not get into the details of the station design or station area planning. The real focus of this is which of the alternatives should move forward into the analysis. We're going to be working on positive station design in parallel with the environmental review process that's going to lead towards an eventual decision on the alignment of the stations. There's the Model Code Partnership project that is a Federal Transit Administration grant to Snohomish County, Sound Transit, Everett, and Linwood, and I believe one or two other partners as well. That was a big multi-year grant process that has a work program that's designed to make the most of the system, both with regards to transit-oriented development, land use around the station areas. We're going to take, I think, orient that project towards anti-displacement work a little bit more than it has been in the past. See some best practices there. Sound Transit has a station design manual, those are not exactly the right words, but that's close, that they actually just recently released, that is a fantastic and very graphically compelling and interesting document that talks about how stations and the station immediate area and broader area should be designed and what Sound Transit standards are will be for that. I do not expect housing on top of the stations. I think all of the stations in Everett will be elevated. So we'll have definitely housing and other development in close proximity, but we're not going to have a stacked environment like that.
And to kind of answer your question further, I'm on the community advisory group for the Everett Link, and I've seen some mockups that I can share with you that just show what Sound Transit is kind of envisioning some of these stations might look like.
Any additional questions? No? Okay. Okay, we'll have open public comment next, but I'd like to provide some instructions to participants. To those of you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone. Or if you're calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comment, I'll ask if anyone wants to speak. If you are participating remotely and would like to provide comment, please unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone, and when you're done, please mute again. Do we have any community members here in person to provide public comment? Kathy, do we have anyone?
No guests.
Okay, thank you. Okay. On to new business, land acknowledgement. As you all noticed, we've incorporated land acknowledgement into the opening of our commission meetings, which seems very appropriate since we are the body that deals with recommending land use. So that's a pretty exciting thing to add. Item B on our new business, Everett 2024 Growth Alternatives Briefing. And I'll turn that over to you, Becky.
Thank you. Excuse me, Becky McCreary, land use, long-range planning manager, not land use. Anyway, tonight, we're excited to talk to you about our preliminary growth alternatives. We went out for scoping last spring, and we've done some other community events to gather data about what the community would like to see. And so we've been working hard on developing the growth alternatives that we will take forward into our environmental review process. So we're going to share some of the preliminary details, and we'd love to get your feedback on that, on some of these points. So the next thing is, we are in Phase Two in terms of the project status. We're talking about how to accommodate growth targets, both in housing and employment. And then we will continue that through the summer. We'll have a more detailed schedule for you soon. So just as a reminder of what and why we're doing, we are extending the planning horizon from 2035 to 2044, and we are going to respond to new state laws that have come into effect since our last update. We also have some new multi-county planning policies, the regional growth strategy from PSRC, and the countywide planning policies have also been updated. We'll be incorporating those things. We need to complete a big, robust public participation program, and then finally, we will do our environmental review. But those are our statutory requirements for this project. So now I'm going to turn it over to Yorick to talk about the housing targets to start with.
Okay. So we've been working on these alternatives for a while, and so have other folks who are involved in this process, namely the Department of Commerce, Snohomish County Tomorrow, all of the cities and the county within Snohomish County. And are there any others that are involved in this process? I think those are the major players, the Office of Financial Management for the county control totals, the growth forecasts, and the Census Bureau. Everything was delayed from COVID, from where it was supposed to be. So some of these are inputs to the process that are only falling into place and becoming clear now. Chief among those are the housing and employment growth targets that really define our work. These charts here are in your packets, and if you're looking at the PDF version, you can zoom in all the way for some things like the legend there. So I'll spend some time on this chart explaining what it is. So we are required at a citywide level to accommodate the growth targets that are allocated to us through a process that starts with a state forecast for the amount of growth that is likely to come to each county, including Snohomish County. Then that growth forecast is disaggregated to all of the cities and unincorporated planning areas through a growth target process that is done through Snohomish County Tomorrow, which is an association body of all of the staff and elected officials of the cities and the county and the Talalip tribes within Snohomish County. That gave us our number that we've actually had for about a year now, which is a population growth target of 179,000 people, I think it is. But we don't plan directly for people in planning. We plan and we regulate housing units, and so we needed a conversion from that population factor into a housing number. And that's the work that's been underway, and it is almost complete. It is being done again through that Snohomish County Tomorrow body. And the conversion takes into account assumed future household size, vacancy rate, not important for Everett, but second homes and other types of housing, and then group quarters, which is the population that doesn't live in a normal household, so institutional populations and student housing and things like that. All of those factors, done in a consistent way throughout the county, deliver a number of housing units that each city and planning area needs to accommodate. One of those new planning laws that Becky mentioned in our statutory requirements is House Bill 1220, which passed a couple of sessions ago, I think it was two sessions ago, that included a new detailed path to addressing housing affordable to different economic segments. I think that has always been somewhat a requirement in the Growth Management Act that cities and everybody provide for housing for all economic segments, but it became vastly more clear and more directive with House Bill 1220. And it put a responsibility on the state through the Department of Commerce to develop a methodology and to disaggregate the numbers by what the expected number of households in different economic segments will be in the future. And then we have to plan for those numbers collectively. So the state doesn't define which cities have to plan for which distribution of economic segments, but it does define a methodology, and it does say that you all have to figure it out. So through Snohomish County Tomorrow process, we have gotten fairly close to figuring it out. Right now, we're at the Planning Advisory Committee Working Group phase, has identified option C, as I'll get to what all that means. Option C as the recommendation that will then go to the full Planning Advisory Committee, and then Snohomish County Tomorrow, the elected body that will make the final decision. So our growth target on the chart here is the blue shaded dashed line that is going from our existing population of 48,000, not population, housing units of 48,600 up to our growth target, which is 85,600. You can also see two horizontal lines. Those are our estimated capacity by two different methods. In 2021, with a very specific methodology, the county and the cities found through our Buildable Lands report a capacity for 68,500 housing units. So that's about 21,000 units of existing capacity. And then with that growth target, we need to find through this process capacity for an additional 17,000 housing units to get to our full growth target. The colors that you see on this chart refer to those economic segments. On the bottom in the grays are emergency shelter and permanent supportive housing. So there's an estimate of how much of those beds and rooms that we will need in the future. Going all the way up to the blue bar is 120% of area median income and above. So all of those are number of housing units that are affordable to those economic segments. Our alternatives that we'll talk about in a little bit, we've got a current plans extended alternative, which will get us just above the capacity. And I will talk about why it is just above the capacity in a little bit. And then we have two growth alternatives that will achieve our growth target in different ways, a dispersed and a concentrated growth alternative. So these are the three alternatives that we've been talking about, at least at a high level, since the scoping process last year. Anything else to note on this?
I have a question.
Yes, sure.
Do you know the number of what the area median household income is?
I looked at it earlier today. I want to say it's like $130,000. It's complicated because everything depends on the household size. It's really a whole table rather than a single number. There is an area median income, but all of the distribution by income limits and everything go by percent of that. But yeah, good question, and I've got a couple of slides to try to turn these, well, here they are. Turn these numbers into real.
Can I ask a question about that last slide?
Yeah.
Am I seeing this right, that in 2016, the estimated capacity was higher than it was in 2021?
Yes, sorry, I didn't mention that higher capacity. As part of the 2015 Comprehensive Plan Update, which was the first in which we had these really large growth targets under Vision 2040, now Vision 2050 at the regional level, we did a capacity analysis that looked at basically every rosy, rose-colored way of looking at capacity. I think that's fair to say. And found a stretch capacity of 88,200. Some of that relied on changes to be made. Some of it relied on assumptions like Wazoo Everett and Everett Community College build lots and lots more student housing. Some of it was assumptions about accessory dwelling units and infill development, some of which would have required code changes. I think that didn't happen. Some of it was assumptions about more parcels developing than Buildable Lands assumes. So Buildable Lands is like the official capacity number, and it has a very defined methodology. We put on the rose-colored glasses, and we were able to show a stretch ability to get to that 88,000 number. But some of the assumptions have not panned out. Some of the assumptions relied on things that we have not yet done. And some of them are possible, and it just depends whether they will happen or not. So I would put our true capacity is probably not that 88,000. But just to know that the 68,000 housing unit capacity could be seen as conservative. It assumes, for instance, that 25% of the redevelopable parcels won't because the property owner is not interested in it. That sometimes is a very reasonable market factor. Sometimes it's not that high. It looks at achieved densities that you've had in the recent past. So you can't just say this property is zoned for 300 units an acre, and so everything's going to be in this zone will achieve 300 units an acre. You say it's zoned theoretically to 300, but we saw 60 in a recent development. And so that gets folded into what the assumption needs to be. So that's the difference between those two capacity numbers. As part of this Comprehensive Plan Update, we're going to need to do a land capacity analysis that demonstrates that with the plans, policies, and assumptions that we put together in this update that we can achieve the 85,600 number. And those assumptions could be somewhere in the middle of the rose-colored and the more defined Buildable Lands methodology.
So I guess, I mean, I suppose one could say, without completely discounting what now from 2016, which wasn't too long ago, that maybe the 17,000 capacity is, we might, we probably could maybe be a lot less than that.
I, yes.
Okay.
Fair to say that the real capacity is probably between those two numbers.
Your question on the multicolored columns. I'm looking at the top two colors, the blue and the salmon color. It looks like those are the two that are anticipated to grow the most or are needed to grow the most. What are those categories?
Let me flip forward to these. So first, what the colors are, so that, I don't know what you would call that color, yellowish color. That is the Nimbus Apartments right down the street, just opened, apartment 713, listed for $2770 a month, $2,770 a month. For a three-person household, that puts you at about 95% of area median income that apartment would be affordable to. If it was two people in there, it would be more like 110% AMI. This one near Holly and Evergreen Way rents, I found this on Craigslist, rents for $14.25. For three people, that's about a 45% AMI, a little bit higher for if there were two people. And then this duplex unit near Baker Heights rents for $16.25, and that's about 55%. So that's a sense of where you are on the spectrum. And then this one shows exactly what each of these bars are. So the blue bar on the top is 120% or more of area median income households. And then salmon-colored is 100 to 120. So those two together would represent all of the above median income households. Out or above. And you're right, that is more than, that is the majority of the growth that we would be planning for if option C winds up going forward through the whole process. The reason for this is it seeks to do more of a fair share distribution of housing affordable to different economic segments. And right now, Everett is fairly well overrepresented in the lower cost housing. And so to even that out a little bit throughout the county, Everett would be planning for more higher-end housing. And another city that is dominated by expensive housing right now would have a chart that would look different than this. So this is going to be probably a robust conversation at the elected and the staff level at Snohomish County Tomorrow. At the end of the day, each city and the county will need to demonstrate that it has put into place the conditions for success in this distribution. Obviously, cities in the county don't build housing, but we do zone to allow it. We do, for instance, if you're looking at permanent supportive housing, you would have to demonstrate that your zoning can accommodate that. You may not be building it as a city. We may not be building as a city, but we have to demonstrate that if a state funding, county funding, and a provider come together to build that housing, that we would be able to cite it within the city. This is, I'd say, near revolutionary in the planning framework that we've operated under since 1990. And it's the first time we're going through it. There is detailed guidance that's come out from the state. I considered adding that into your packet, but somebody advised me against making those too heavy. But if you go to the State Department of Commerce, and it's, you can just Google Housing Planning Department, State Department of Commerce, and you'll find a page with all kinds of resources on it.
Yorick, is there an enforcement mechanism at all for cities that might refuse to do this?
Yeah, the enforcement mechanism for most planning requirements is the Growth Management Hearings Board, and it would be a challenge to that board that a city has not fulfilled the requirements of the Growth Management Act. These requirements to plan for these economic segments, according to the methodology that's prescribed by the Department of Commerce, are in the Growth Management Act requirements for housing planning. And any failure to act or any actions that are inconsistent with that could be subject to appeal to the hearings board, which would then remand a plan to a jurisdiction for further work. Or at its extreme, the state can withhold all state grant funding from a city and eventually, I think, remove your ability to process permits and things like that.
And Yorick, looking at the Snohomish County Tomorrow column there, how is that derived? And I guess the follow-on question is, are there other jurisdictions that are heavily blue and salmon as opposed to the lower-income brackets that they'd like to see Everett take on?
So first, on the left is 2020. On the right is 2021. So, first, on the left is 2020, on the right is 2044, and in the middle is the delta between those two. Which one were you talking about?
I'll bring my glasses next time.
Yeah. No, I, yes, thank you. I was going to talk through it, but we ran through that point. Yes, different cities are going to have very different look, and they're having very different conversations with their councils right now.
Let me just confirm that 2021 American Community Survey from the U.S. Census, the median household income for our area is about 100,000. 100,000?
Okay, so this will be, there's much more process to come, but this is our best estimate of what we'll wind up with. So, this is what we're plugging into our work for now, but this will, may change. Employment targets, the other half of the equation. These colors, rather than economic segments, refer to sectors of the economy. Brown up top is services, which is the dominant sector in the future. Purple is manufacturing, which is the dominant sector now, thanks largely to Boeing and its suppliers. We currently have, I designed this whole thing for print and paper and PDF, not for the slide, so I apologize. I should have changed the font size on that. We have about 100,000 jobs now. Using that buildable lands capacity methodology, we have room for 142,000 jobs. We have a growth target for 167,000 jobs. We don't have the same process for allocating jobs according to sector that we do for housing. What I did to break up the future jobs into sectors is I used a regional forecast that was done in 2018 at the Puget Sound region, regional level, that estimated the number of jobs that would be created region-wide in different sectors. And I just applied that proportionally to Everett. Very possible, oh, let's, these are the same things. I think I've got, no. You see a lot of growth in services there. I think that is probably very likely. When this forecast was made in 2018, manufacturing wasn't looking so good. Retail was looking a little bit better. So, all of these different categories have shifted a little bit since even 2018. It's about five years old. Everett could very well capture more of the regions' manufacturing disproportionately, and so definitely these colors can shift. Yes? Yeah. Let me zoom in so I can read my, oh, let me switch to this slide here. So, this, on the top there, those numbers would be the growth in each sector if we followed the region's proportion. So, again, I would expect Everett's growth in manufacturing to be higher than the regional average because we are a center of manufacturing in here. I think services is probably worth the most conversation. You can see there it dominates the expectation for future jobs and what people have in their minds for what services may be a little bit different, but than what it actually is. But first, because that's the way this goes, just a note on space needs, services. We have some standard in that buildable lands analysis has some standard factors for amount of square feet per employee that would be necessary. If you apply the 55,000 jobs of services and 400 square feet per employee, you get nine to 21 million square feet of services. That would be closer to the 21 million. The nine million is if we took Everett's existing proportion versus the regional proportion. I was trying to remember why that's a range. On the right there, you can see the subsectors within services, and the size of the font is sized according to how, what proportion of services that this subsector is in Everett. So, when you hear services, especially looking forward, think mainly healthcare and social assistance, probably mainly the healthcare one. Professional, scientific, and technical services, I have to imagine, is also associated with Boeing and suppliers. And then a combination in food services is probably mostly what pops into people's minds when they hear the word services. But I think it's really worth focusing, and this has some bearing on the discussions we'll be having over the course of the next year or two about healthcare and medical. We have some pretty strict limits in our code about locating clinics and things. And if this is going to be where it's at for employment and economic activity in the city, we're going to need to think carefully about how we regulate healthcare and associated services. 21 million square feet. The Everett Municipal Building next door is 100,000 square feet, and the new Kaiser expansion is 165,000 square feet. So, we're talking up to 210 more Everett Municipal Buildings worth of space, or another 100 or so Kaiser expansions. Note that the Kaiser expansion also has twice as many square feet of parking as it does for actual building areas. So, you have to build that into the, into the equation too for some uses. I think that's an upper limit for a couple of reasons. The space needs, gig work and remote work were both fairly new since these forecasts were made. And the number of jobs is not full-time equivalent. So, if you have part-time job, if you work at a restaurant in the evening and then work at another restaurant in the morning, a coffee shop in the morning, that's two jobs, not one, even if it's part-time for both. Gig work did not exist, and remote work was much less of a thing when these forecasts came out. So, I'd expect both of them to drive down the amount of square feet that you need per employee. And I thought there was one other reason this might be an upper limit. Yeah, I'm not remembering it. Throughout this whole process, we focus a lot more on housing because employment is much more, and this is a technical term, squishy. Every housing unit you add comes through the city planning office and needs a permit. You can double the amount of jobs in a building without ever coming to the city just by adding a shift, restaurants and a manufacturing facilities and all those things. So, it's much less tethered to what we, as a local government, do and don't allow than housing is. Mainly for that reason, we're putting up most of our energy into addressing the housing and where it's going to go. With most of these alternatives and most of our planning, I think our expectation is that we are going to plan for jobs, and we're going to do all of the actions that it can take to attract jobs and economic activity, but not quite as much of the different alternatives and a dispersed and a concentrated. There's also some pretty clear policy language in our existing comprehensive plan, calling for avoiding new commercial areas. So, we're kind of operating under the assumption that the commercial mixed-use and industrial areas that we have is what we will be working with, and they already allow substantial density. So, most of what we need in terms of regulation is already on the ground, and it's more of a matter of achieving it. Yes?
I'm curious, Yerick, is the PSRC coming up with any guidance on the whole work-at-home phenomenon? That seems to be more than just a pandemic-related thing. It seems to be a trend.
Yeah.
And what that's going to do to the guide, or the estimates for capacity for jobs?
Right. I think we're not alone in focusing on housing. I've asked that question numerous times, both at the county level and at the regional level, and it's always, yes, we're working on that. Yes, it's, yes, it's an impactful thing, but I, the idea that I get is that we should, it seems better to do that at a higher scale than each individual city figuring it out. But yeah, I have not heard clear guidance forthcoming on how these numbers would change. So, I think that gives us latitude to have our own assumptions. And I would apply that by calling these numbers an upper limit and being a little bit more flexible, not that we, we're, the economy and jobs and good jobs is a core focus of the city. I just think the comprehensive plan is not going to be the most important document for that.
Well, I would imagine not all employees for these jobs will definitely live in Everett. There's other cities around here. Not that I noticed Everett's the greatest, in my mind Everett's the center of the world, but the, I'm kind of curious, how do these jobs, particular pay ranges, estimated incomes track along with our income distribution goals? Is there a big delta? Is there not a delta? Has it been, is the analysis on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. The housing affordability numbers have some assumptions about the distribution of earnings among households in the future. And I think it's roughly, the assumption is that there will be a similar distribution in the future as there is now. So, you will have, whatever the median income will, will change, but you will still have 20%, you know, maybe a bell curve or something like that for households. These numbers by sector are not targets that we're aiming for. I think it's important for us to know, it was, I knew services was a big deal. I did not know that it was two-thirds of the economy big deal. And I also want to walk back a little bit that the comp plan isn't a great place to talk about this because I do see potentially a little bit of a mismatch in that a lot of our capacity is in industrial zoning, whereas a lot of the need for spaces and more of that mixed-use types of buildings and commercial types of buildings. But to your question, there is potentially an answer out there, but I don't know the connection. It's really hard to estimate in the future, which is really important to know because your housing affordability depends on the incomes. And if everybody has more income, then we can all have, you know, more expensive housing. But if we're not able to kind of cross that, so it is important, but I don't know.
And do you have the number for the average median household income in Everett? I know that's substantially lower than the region as a whole, right?
It is. I, this is a, thank you for letting me make my comment on median household income, which is that Everett is overrepresented with smaller households. And so, if you take a median household income independent of household size, it will show, it'll make us look like we have lower incomes than we actually do. I took some of that American Community Survey data and looked at how our two-person households stack up compared to the region's two-person households. It was much, much closer. I want to say we were like 75% of Snohomish County's median income, but our two-person households are like 90% of Snohomish County's median income. So, just a caution on using median income, and I think the same goes for median rent, unless you're accounting for the different household and bedroom sizes. But it was somewhere around there, 75%, but much less of a difference when you look at individual household sizes.
Yeah, I remember during the rethink housing process, we found that like an absurd amount of households, as a percentage, qualified as low-income households.
Yeah, yes, that is true. And then, yeah, median is only one point. It doesn't show you if you're very stretched with a whole lot at zero and then a whole lot just above the median. Yeah, that's, we'll try to, in our work on the economic development element and elsewhere, try to dive into that data and give you some more information about it.
I just wanted to just circle back to Commissioner Zalinski's question about the impact of remote work. So, I know there's discussion in parts of the country, parts of the world, really about the impact of that on parcels of land that support business and whether or not there will be an effort to look at rethinking how that is zoned, to devote it to housing. And so, I guess that's kind of a really critical piece of the analysis, especially when we see a lot of vacant commercial land. So, it would be, it would be interesting to hear as that analysis develops, what kind of impact that's going to have, especially considering that we need to meet some pretty robust target numbers for housing. And where is that buildable land going to come from?
Right. Yeah, I, one thing that works in our favor there is almost all of our capacity is in mixed-use zoning. So, this, not that this building is going anywhere anytime soon, but this building would allow either residential or commercial or a combination, and we can kind of let the market sort that out. But it is also worth keeping in mind that both of those targets, which are above their, our capacity levels, are competing for the same land too.
I guess, just a thought, inspired by the chair's comment, that, you know, as we look at like commercial land that's underused, we also partly think that as we move into a place with more remote work, we have our neighborhoods, which have traditionally only been residential, are now essentially mixed-use. And what do we need to do to accommodate the needs of commercial activities that are essentially work activities coming out of our homes in our neighborhoods? So, just food for thought on that. So, thank you for the, thank you for the little ping of inspiration, Chair.
Yeah, it's something we should return to multiple times because this maybe means we need larger space, you know, more square footage for housing if every, you know, many dwelling units are going to have a home office built in, and then maybe a little bit less space for commercial.
Yerick, when was the first time that these, this kind of growth-oriented planning occurred with the stated targets?
I think the system has been in place since 1990, roughly, and it was about a 10-year process to get everything worked through it. So, we've been doing the growth targets for 30 years. The first time with the housing affordability by number with a standardized methodology like this. And employment targets have always been squishy, but they, I think, have been there since the beginning.
And I'm assuming we've tracked kind of historical data between where we thought we should be and where we were at those milestones. How does that usually reconcile? Are we, do we come in light? Are we north of the growth targets? Are we typically on the line? Looking back, how does that wash out?
There was a sea change in 20, well, it started in 2008 when Vision 2040 was adopted, and then that influenced the 2015 to 2035 comprehensive plan cycle that we're in right now. Up until that point, I think growth targets were often set at or below a jurisdiction's capacity. Nobody had to make difficult decisions, and there was enough excess capacity within the urban growth area to soak up whatever demand didn't come to individual cities. Everett has had very high growth periods that have probably overlapped with growth targets at a similar, at a similar trajectory, slope. That's what I was looking for, at a similar slope. Yes. The 2015 growth target was, was a sea change in that Everett was designated as a metropolitan center in a new regional geography system at the Puget Sound Regional Council Geography. Since that point, we have definitely fallen far short of the targets that were allocated to us. I think that shows, I don't want to go back that many slides, but you can see the black dots on the bottom that's in your packets, and that is, you know, aiming at a flatter slope than our growth target is. The expectation was that it would take time, that these sorts of, some of the market needs to catch up, some of the excess capacity in other areas needed to get soaked up, and other amenities and things like light rail is the most visible one, but there's been quite a few others that are already in place in terms of civic amenities and cultural attractions and universities and things like that that have been slowly building. And as you can see with places like Linwood right now that are really booming and around the light rail stations in Seattle, sometimes it all comes out all in once. So, I think there was always an expectation since Vision 2040 that the pace would tilt up towards the end of the planning period. There are, we had a, we had a year in 2021 where we matched our pace that we needed for our existing growth target. There were also six others in which we did not, and to make up for that, you need even bigger growth numbers. So, mostly, we have not been growing at the pace of the targets. And other geographies like unincorporated urban and some of the cities that have seen, you know, Snohomish County, Bothell, and those places have far exceeded their targets. But I think the idea of the regional growth strategy was always a slow bending of the trend that had been established and in place for a long time of concentric rings of growth in the outskirts and trying to bend that trend back towards the core urban area. And it's, it's hard, hard to move that battleship. Do you want to talk growth alternatives? Okay, okay, growth alternatives. So, those were the numbers at the citywide level, and those are more or less prescribed to us from above, although we participate in the process. the process, and we have seats at the table all along the way. And I have not heard any particular griping out of the city at those, at those growth numbers, but they are assigned to us by the county and by the region. At the end of the day, how we grow within the city is, is up to us. And so that's where we're shifting to in this presentation, is those three growth alternatives that you saw in the dotted lines on the previous charts. Growth alternatives need to be studied in the environmental impact statement. State Environmental Policy Act requires a reasonable range of alternatives. And then we'll use the EIS, the environmental impact statement, to disclose, discuss, reveal, analyze all of the differences in performance between these alternatives. To have something to discuss and to report out on how one alternative performs different relative to another one, we need to try to maximize the differences between these alternatives. So you'll see how we have sought to do that. And it's worth keeping in mind that these alternatives are probably not going to be the answer. These are trying to be separate, and these are trying to show us differences. So we can say, well, the concentrated alternative performed better when it comes to access to transit, but the dispersed alternative performed better when it came to access to parks amenities and green space and air quality and things like that. And then we will go using that information and try to craft a preferred alternative that probably lies somewhere between the bookends of these alternatives. So maximize the differences between them. They need to be reasonably achievable, so we cannot have one alternative that has a million-story building on one parcel and doesn't touch the rest of the city. And then, as I said, with the employment being squishy, we're going to focus these alternatives on housing growth and the employment actions, techniques, and all of that will be largely common to each alternative. So we have broken the city up into three areas that we'll use as a framework for outreach and analysis in the environmental review process. And our three alternatives, current plans extended. So this is more or less what we have in the existing 2015 to 2035 plan. It, in this alternative, we would build out the plan according to the comp plan, the zoning map, and the maximum building heights map, which kind of sets in the regulation side, what you can achieve on any given parcel. We would build out all in-place development agreements and master plans. You can see on the top right there, that's just an extract from the buildable lands process. So each parcel has an assumed capacity for redevelopment or additional units on it. But it was interesting to show how heavily tilted our existing plan is towards larger buildings. Out of the 21,000 units of capacity, and hopefully that, that does not add up at all. Well, let the, let the, I'll correct the record on that. I'm not sure where the discrepancy on that is, but the point remains the same, that almost all of our capacity is in larger multifamily buildings. That is really interesting.
But that makes sense, though, right? I mean, of course it is.
Yes.
Because if we're talking density per acre.
Yes.
Of course, that's where the capacity is going to be.
Yeah.
I think the failure of the buildable land study is that, as we've talked before, I don't think that it assumes assemblages.
Hmm.
Right? And so you get into problems there with the reality of buildable lands because oftentimes, for larger projects, requires an assemblage to make it work. And so I, this is fun, but because that isn't considered, it makes me call into question the projections that we're, we're making.
Yeah. Which, which is great, because this is our chance to make our own reasonable assumptions and our own capacity analysis. As long as it's reasonable, that is what is required by the, by the act.
Can I get a point of clarification from Commissioner Zalinski's statement regarding, is that saying that we assume these assemblages will come together under this current plan? Or we assume they will not come together in this current plan?
So I'm not a, I'm not a planner, nor am I a buildable lands expert, but I asked this question a while back. And as it was explained to me, I think in this forum, that buildable lands does not consider adjacent vacant properties to be combined, or even if there's a less than highest and best use on properties, that they would be combined. And so it would be interesting to take a look at, you know, a number of recent developments, larger developments, and compare what the assemblage value yielded versus what the billable land survey would have yielded for those same parcels.
Right.
Because then I think you can start to understand, what's the, call it, percentage difference that we're overplanning for, given that it doesn't take into account assemblages?
Yep. Buildable lands does reliably produce gross buildable acres because it takes out critical areas, it takes out other unbuiltable portions of land. You're right that it does separate, and you can get many fewer units just because of setbacks and how you would build a structure on three parcels next to it, next to each other, than you could if you combined all three of them. You get much higher yield. So yes, that, that does affect the buildable lands, but we do have a good number of, a good number for the gross buildable acres. I did, I did these numbers just before the meeting started. So the nimbus that you just saw, 165 units on a 28,000 square feet of land. It was 300 units per acre. And at that rate, we needed 150 acres of gross buildable land, if everything was a nimbus. And so you could compare that against the amount of buildable land that we have and slice it in different ways to come up with that.
And did they maximize the zoning envelope for that site?
Probably pretty close.
From a height standpoint?
Probably. I think, well, no, maybe not. Might be 12 to 25, and they went up to seven or eight, you know. So, yeah, they did not even max.
So there's capacity there that was, was not sought to be achieved, probably because it wasn't economically viable.
Right, right.
Didn't, going back to economic viability, didn't, wasn't the, like, the market assessment that we had, that kind of six stories is where you're going to be, eight stories, yeah, six to eight stories is where it's going to be. So we have kind of that as a...
So I guess, said in another way, that maybe we do have significant capacity, but because the rents don't justify the cost of construction, we're not able to achieve that.
Yep.
Can I ask, so, for example, like the nimbus project, so they left a lot of capacity on the table by not going up to their maximum height. Where does that go in our analysis? Does that still exist, the idea that they could just tear the nimbus down and build it up to the maximum? So can we, when we're doing this, can we count that? Or do we have to take that off the table now and, and reallocate that to somewhere else?
Yeah, it's off the table now because it was built, recently built, and there's no, no reason that it would redevelop during the planning period. The, it probably achieved the capacity that was assumed. I want to say the mixed urban zone in the buildable lands analysis assumed around 60 to 80 dwelling units per acre, and that was 300. So even though it didn't use its entire capacity, buildable lands doesn't assume that you always use your entire capacity either. There are lots of additions and subtractions here. You have developments that are way, way below, allows seven-story buildings, and you've got townhouses or something. And then you've got others that exceed the assumptions.
So it just seems to me that you're always kind of, in some ways, kind of chasing your tail after those, that, that capacity, because you can say, hey, the capacity exists, then someone goes and builds some buildings, and all of a sudden, your, your numbers are out of whack as soon as, I mean, as soon as they're set.
Well, and that's partly why we had the, the discussion on the, the R4 zone, because I think there was, at least, my comments were intentional, that I did not want to cap the development capacity of those sites now because somebody put a $200,000 ADU on them, when they should really be holding significantly more density.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That was, that was exactly what I discussed with Mr. Muhammad, because that was the particular issue that, that he really wanted to talk about, one of the particular issues. And, and his perspective on that, from a developer standpoint, had to do with, at what point would it be viable to build something that had that density? At what point would it be a project that was economically feasible? And in the interim, what could be done and what couldn't be done by exempting that? So, yeah, it's, it's an interesting discussion. And I think there was, there was definitely some sound reasoning around why we did what we did, but there are alternative perspectives on that as well.
I just wanted to hearken back to what you said earlier about achievable densities, because that is built into the buildable lands analysis. And that's where sort of the five-over-two paradigm that we're sort of living with now is realized, or where it's reflected in the analysis, is in the achievable densities. So we're not achieving...
Achieved, achieved.
Or achieved, yeah. The, where we're actually observing, such as the nimbus project and others, to see what we're actually getting versus what the theoretical capacity is based strictly on the zone.
Right. So at the end of the day, it is going to be very complicated. There is going to be big spreadsheets, and we're going to need to, we're going to need to demonstrate that we can achieve that number. The reality is much more complicated, and we also need to just make sure that we have a good plan. So this is one thing that we need to keep in mind of, but it shouldn't drive the entirety of this. It's an important one because a shortage of buildable land collectively leads to a housing shortage and all kinds of bad things. But it's only one piece of other complicated things that we'll need to keep in mind. So, current plans extended, basically, it achieves our capacity under, under buildable lands. And then we are just a hair short of our 2035 capacity and our 2035 target. So we're required to do what's called reasonable measures under state law, which means that we have to take actions to close that gap as part of this comprehensive plan update. That's pretty well overshadowed by the new increment of growth that's coming, but it is a step that we need to take. So in the current plans extended alternative, we're including two actions that will close the gap of about 1,500 units. And those are the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that will be still coming to the council shortly, and the housing development incentive program that we talked about at the last meeting. Chief among those is the multifamily tax exemption that will help realize additional capacity that is already on the table. Here is a dot map of the buildable lands capacity with all the caveats that we mentioned. Oh, light rail station areas also will be added to the current plans extended as kind of a placeholder amount of growth for each station area. So as you can see with the current plans extended, it's very heavily focused on downtown and the arterial corridors. You can also see some clusters of housing capacity where it's already been built, waterfront place, and riverfront, and riverside, just moving down the city here. The ones for like waterfront place, that looks like an awful lot of dots, but I believe it was directly imputed for what the development agreement is. So that's already happened, and that that is counted. And then continuing to move on down, note this extends past the city limits. But again, the pattern is unmistakably connected to our arterials in downtown. The reasonable measures, about a 1,500-unit shortfall for 2035. Those are actions necessary to reduce differences between assumptions and targets. And there's a list in Exhibit C of your memo that have a list of actions that cities can take if there is a reasonable measures triggered. And we propose those three, accessory dwelling units, multifamily tax exemption, and encouraging infill and redevelopment. That should cover that gap. And then light rail station area planning, I'll skip past this one, but we have policies in our existing plan that, that anticipate light rail arriving, and station area planning will be conducted around those stations. And so we'll put placeholders into all three alternatives to address that station area planning. Just to zoom in on the comprehensive planned map in the vicinity of each of our four stations. Then the two growth alternatives that will add that additional 17,000 units of capacity, give or take. Concentrated growth alternative really builds on the same pattern that you see with the, with the, no, the current plans extended alternative, where we assume four to six floors. We would assume more enough to get that 17,000 in, but mainly in the same places, downtown arterial corridors. We would incorporate it into this, into this alternative, a little bit of a transition area. So Broadway, North Broadway, I use as an example, four-to-six-floor zoning, mixed urban on Broadway. And then there's an alley. And then across the alley, it's 28-foot height limit, R2, single-family zoning. You can put an accessory dwelling unit there, and that's about it. That's an awfully sharp drop-off. And so with this alternative, especially if we're going to be boosting that four-to-six floors up to eight floors or something like that, to accommodate all of that growth in the same places, we would take probably out to the, to the next streets, a little bit of a buffer area for kind of a wedding cake pattern. This bumps up against that realistic kind of a problem. If we're not, we haven't seen a lot of takers, looking at North Broadway again, at that four-to-six floor, so would we expect takers at eight to 10 floors? And would that be reasonable? But again, this is an alternative designed to show kind of one extreme. Otherwise, very few changes, so we would not incorporate in any changes to the RS, R1, R2 zones into this alternative. And the east-west roads, there's a series of kind of collector arterial type roads, like rungs on a ladder or ribs on a spine going up and down the city. We don't really use those right now for land use and development. There are some historic neighborhood business nodes on them and everything, but otherwise, those little arterials don't function at all like the big arterials that are all, have significant development on them. Do we want to change and look at those arterials a different way, Madison and 19th and, and 100th and all that? That's an open question. We haven't figured that out yet, whether and how to incorporate it into these alternatives, but it's something that we're looking at. Then the dispersed alternative is, on the other end of sort of a spectrum, would be middle housing in residential neighborhoods throughout the city. So we would be more measured with the growth on the arterials, probably fairly consistent with what the existing capacity is on the Broadways and Evergreen Ways and Everett Mall Ways, a little bit broader of a transition area. And then the middle housing would, would be most of that 17,000 increment of growth. And so we would be able to really study and have a platform to discuss the trade-offs with middle housing, which is a big topic in the planning world. With all of this, the state may do this all for us in the next couple of weeks. If you've been following the news with the middle housing bill and a transit-oriented development bill that are both very much alive, I expect something to pass, so we'll just have to incorporate that. Same question with east-west roads. A little bit on middle housing, I think you're all familiar from previous presentations, but it's everything between detached houses and mid-rise apartment condo building-type structures. This famous graphic from Opticoast Design shows it graphically, and so we still have some work to do collectively on defining that dispersed growth alternative. So we were talking about that as staff today. And I think for the purposes of alternatives, we may look at just kind of a peanut butter approach, what if the entire city allowed middle housing? So something closer to what a UR3 might allow right now, and maybe a few extra feet for the height, that, what it would take to allow some of these middle housing types. Definitely worth mentioning that different, people have different definitions for middle housing, and I see things like live-work on the right-hand side there that I wouldn't include in that definition, and many of the definitions that I've seen don't. We can draw the lines wherever we think is appropriate. At the end of the day, for the alternative, we're going to pick some level within there and assume that in the environmental impact statement. Again, that's not going to be the plan, probably. It's going to be, now that we know better about how this performs, and we, we look at each individual area carefully as part of the preferred alternative process, late this year or next year. We may look at different areas that have a higher level of, of intensity of middle housing, or a lower, maybe just duplexes or something like that, just nibbling at the edges of middle housing. So, more work to be done around there, both for the alternatives definition. I think that's one of our last pieces of work, puzzle to put together before we can start working on the EIS.
Out of curiosity, as we look at the, these housing options, have we thought about what it, how each of these models or plans would impact the capability for our residents to build and grow wealth, to, you know, take, move themselves out of poverty, to access stable, affordable housing, to access homeownership? And through, and what amount of weight has that analysis gone into? Because I imagine, like, you know, you could do a fourplex with an FHA loan, which is more... more accessible and probably cheaper for a person, for four families than the commercially built like multi-story apartments. We need both, to be clear, but you know, how do we, how has that gone into the equation?
Yeah, I think you've just written a couple of sentences in the housing chapter of the environmental impact statement. That's exactly the kind of trade offs that I think we want to discuss. Some are, have more opportunities for small businesses, small developers and some have less. They're going to have different affordability parameters, different likelihood of happening, different impacts on street scape and, you know, neighborhood character and things like that, different impacts on schools and all of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lark, because I was just going to ask if the analysis of which option might allow for greater homeownership opportunities, if that's going to be included? Because condos, and I know that there are some barriers to that that are unique to a condo construction versus other types of things and we don't necessarily decide those. Those policies are set at state level, some of them. So, I don't know if perhaps some municipalities are considering lobbying the state to maybe modify some of those condo regulations to make it more feasible to have condo projects in cities like ours, because homeownership, it is a big deal. So, thank you for raising that issue, Commissioner Lark.
Two sentences written down.
Chair Chatters, there's actually a bill going through right now that would actually greatly enhance the ability to do condominiums. So, I don't know if it'll pass or not. And then that kind of follows up my, when you were talking about, there are probably a half or probably a dozen housing laws going right through this. Are we set for the comp plan to adjust as those come out? My fear is we'll get all this done and then just as we're done, those will come out, it'll drastically change it.
Yeah.
At least I hope it will.
At least we'll know in, end of session is in a month or less. So, at least we'll know then. That's a little bit deep into the process for major changes, but at least they're along the lines of what we're studying or where we're headed anyways. But yeah, we will have to pivot and it seems almost certain that something is going to pass.
On the heels of Commissioner Lark's question about homeownership, does the EIS or part of our process also evaluate the cost to the city to pursue these different plans as well as the impact on the tax base as a result of the value that's created?
Yeah, all of those are topics for the EIS and I think we will be back here in future meetings to ask for help or at least review that we got it right and that we're, you know, there's going to be a limit to how much raw analysis and it's not going to be like perfect, like this one is going to deliver this percentage of homeownership or something like that. It may be qualitative in places, but those are exactly the considerations that we need to keep in mind when we're designing a preferred alternative that hopefully maximizes all of those positive things and minimizes the negatives.
Do we look at the, and in that same hand, or the other side of the hand, do we look at the wealth lost by not having affordable housing and losing people coming to this community because they can't afford to live here?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, those are all, I will try to make notes of all those points. Those are all important things.
Can I ask though, one thing, when I was looking at this, I was trying to put this all into context because we had a number of different kind of plans come across with the rethink housing. Where this kind of fits in to all of that, and maybe I'm wrong, but I just want to get it straight in my head, this to me seems like more kind of a macro view of these things. So, some of these things maybe we're talking about here, not saying, not important, but maybe for consideration of this 2044 planning, would it be actually that maybe we're looking at almost kind of theoretical capacities and allocations on a larger scale as opposed to breaking it down to, I mean, even getting talked about middle housing. In my mind, that almost seems like you're getting maybe too granular for purposes of what we're doing here. Is that, would that be a fair way for me to kind of organize it in my head when I'm trying to put it all into context?
Yeah. I mean, different alternatives are, and a different pattern at the citywide level is going to trickle all the way down to individual decisions and this is going to be general patterns that we're going to discuss the performance of. There's a whole process that we're going to go through with policies and kind of the micro scale, which is how should a development be designed? We have policies that feed into the detailed development regulations. If you build a townhouse on the R2 zone, you must have a front porch of 30 square feet. That is guided by a policy that says have an attractive street scape and ensure compatibility between different types of developments. And we're going to have to go through all of those policies. Kind of doesn't matter what the porch looks like for how many big buildings and little buildings you have. So, that's kind of two separate levels that we'll look at. But all of these, especially when you're talking big distributions, like even though those numbers were wrong, very few houses and duplexes and triplexes are in our current plan. There's a very different future for the city if we have a lot more ability for choices in housing types in the future. And so, that's the kind of thing that we'll discuss in the plan.
For the record, I want all my porches to be brutalist and I look at, I mean, the sentiment I got from our last meeting regarding the market study is that the market will get here when the market gets here, which will probably coincide pretty closely with the, with the light rail. So, we have about a 15-year delta between now and then. It's 2037, was it? I can't remember.
2037.
So, 14 years. That means we don't always have to follow the same plan. Like, we can start doing shaping operations, setting conditions to make that market more impactful, make those buildings taller, on those main arterials by adding density and finding more programs along the edges to make missing middle in there and also use that opportunity to achieve some really important like social goals in the city, which is to increase our overall homeownership rate, allow people who transition out of, you know, the rent cycle into ownership, allow communities materially marginalized from a homeownership into that. So, and that would be done, the city has the capacity to do that now and institute programs to do that now. So, I think as we're like, we're setting up this plan and saying, this is the only thing we're going to do for the next 15, 20 years, we really have to be cognizant, I think, that there could be an inflection point or a pivot point in that plan. We're going to do this for 10 years. We're going to make sure that we set conditions and then we're going to work to, you know, intentionally change it and knowing that, you know, here we're going to be really working to institute programs to do the missing middle in these areas while we preserve main corridors and then we can set conditions on these main corridors for larger and more expansive development when the market comes because we've created a better market condition for when the market comes.
Yes, continuous review and evaluation. We'll be back here with a new plan update in 10, 10 years or 2034 is when the next one is due. So, we never make it to the end of a plan period before looking at the plan again. And plus, these action plans, which are kind of iterative, we will create an action plan with this comp plan update, but the comp plan update is where a lot of the actions in the housing action plan will be implemented. There was, yes, I'll leave it at there, that there is continuous planning. Otherwise, what would we do?
I think what I was hearing in your comments was a question as to whether or not there would be maybe short-term goals and long-term goals incorporated into how we're planning. Like, for example, Commissioner Ballard mentioned the cost of inaction, which I know from experience, small businesses are feeling in terms of hiring and how the lack of housing options are impacting just the ability to get staff in the doors in some industries. And so, is that kind of what you were asking? Like, is there going to be a middle housing plan in anticipation of towards the end of the 20-year planning horizon? We'd see more larger developments? Is that, is that what I was hearing?
Kind of short-term goals, but also, you know, near-term emphasis, longer-term emphasis. Like, the goal in my mind would be to, you know, at this time, like, we don't really have the conditions to put in like 12, 13, 14-story buildings along the main arterial arterials. It's going to be a while. Like, what can we do now in the meantime to like set conditions with, you know, can we use the missing middle housing in places that will not have the 12 to, you know, the six to 12 buildings to like improve our current, like, for lack of a better term, improve our foxhole, so to speak, and be, you know, improve the fighting position of the city. And that's just an emphasis. Like, you know, for now, we are emphasizing programs that do this and this is, extends beyond just land use. This land use is like the scene setting for which we can, the city can then implement policies to do that. So, change in priorities, Chair Chatters, but all, I mean, short-term goals, long-term, but an emphasis and then transitions too.
So, Yorke, is that kind of a function of deciding, because these are distinct alternatives and you mentioned that the solution is probably going to be a space in between. So, is that type of analysis kind of along with finding that space in between and when we decide actually what plan to move forward with?
That there would be different emphases by era, like short-term, short-term work, short-term emphasis and long-term. If I'm unders, there's two things that that makes me think of. One is that in general, you need to have the regulations in place the day you adopt the plan. So, if we say our plan is middle housing, we need to have the regulations that would allow a permit to come in for middle housing the next day. You can phase these things and Shoreline is an example of phased zoning where they're waiting for the light rail to happen. They wanted to get everything set and ready to go and it automatically unlocks five years from now because you don't want to have the wrong type of development because the light rail wasn't there yet. There's also going to be an action plan as part of this and there always had been the opportunity to do an action plan, except now there's some more accountability associated with it because I think a lot of cities were putting a lot of really nice stuff in the action plan and never getting to it. And so, these plans all looked a lot better than they actually turned out to be. So, the action plan could be a holding place for things that we don't get to in terms of actually changing the development regulations and the zoning rules with this periodic update, but it's only a couple of years and there's accountability associated with it. But it can also be things that we have pre-planned that are just not, you know, the emphasis right now is on certain types of where the market is hot and then next we will turn our attention elsewhere. But then another thing you mentioned, what kind of gets to that minimum, minimum density kind of a thing and whether if it's competing the same parcel of land, you're probably not going to get a duplex on it today and then a bigger development in 10 years. You're probably locked down for 30 or so.
Yeah, and I guess I, for some reason, this is, that concept right there is kind of a, has struck me during this meeting and I guess which is why I was kind of asking a question about this kind of being a theoretical exercise and, I mean, so I'm thinking of, you know, like the metro Everett, that we did, that all that planning and arrange, that we have capacity there for up to, I don't know what the limit was, 10, 12, maybe even higher. But the reality is, and I'm thinking of the presentation we had at our last meeting, that the reality is that isn't even economically feasible now and it's not even clear at what point in the next 30, 40, 50 years it ever might be. So, all of that capacity, we might be able, we might be able to count it in our current, but it's not realistic. It's just not. And so, it just makes me think that, I mean, I guess you do have to be careful, but when we're, when we're trying to come up with all these plans, I mean, if we were to plan for realistic, if we were to limit, to get rid of all that and say, okay, realistically, we were going to cap that at six, eight stories, all of a sudden, I think all our numbers will look very different because we're going to have to spread that massively just under our current. We've got to spread that massively across the city, let alone to plan for additional capacity. And I guess it just kind of boggles my mind in some ways thinking about how to do that. So, I'm, this isn't really a question, I'm just thinking that it is, it's making my head spin on some of those. That, I guess that gap between the theoretical and the actual and where we are, and in all this process, where, where we're landing on that and what we're actually even really trying to achieve. Is this really just a theoretical exercise and how much do we really need to accommodate for the actual reality? Because it seems to me that if we, if we did that, this exercise here would be almost impossible to cover that gap.
Yes, and I think we really need to keep an eye on feasibility, financial realities and everything, but at the same time, this is a long-term plan and 20 years is a long time. And I have seen plans that didn't look achievable and then there they are. Some of those places that, well, downtown Bellevue, University District, Roosevelt, a decade at least went between a planning commission room, chambers and lines on a map and growth charts and everything. And then, and nothing was happening, nothing was happening. You still got a taco time there and there's no, and then all of a sudden, within like a five-year period, the University District and Roosevelt are phenomenal, the amount of change that has happened. And they, they were direct rezones that had squares and, and then it sat for a decade and nothing happened and then the light switched. So, we do need to, we need to keep an eye on both, the feasibility and the long-term view and not be too held back by current constraints.
I think that's a good comment, Yorke. And I also think it's important to recognize that those areas didn't grow up and achieve their potential just because it was planned from a planning standpoint. There were other economic development factors at play. And so, the work we're doing here is only part of the equation and I think that's something we need to keep in mind because if we're, if we're saying, you know, in one sentence, we want these tall buildings and we want, you know, all this economic prosperity to come to Everett, and then in the very next sentence, we're focusing on how do we build, you know, more or more than our fair share in the county, housing for people that are in the lower tranches of that AMI bracket? Those two things don't really work together, right? Because you can't build those tall buildings at that income threshold.
It is a lot to, to keep moving forward at the same time and balance. And that is why we were thrilled to have the housing development incentives work to help put some reality to it, although our consultant reminds us that all those numbers, that feasibility is valid for like six months or something and that the market is different. So, I'm not, I will go over this one. So, specific amendment requests, state law and city code require a formal process to consider specific amendments to the comprehensive plan and the zoning map and the development regulations, often called a docket process. I think we've, we've gone through that in the intervening years. We're combining that in the periodic update process, two years' worth of requests into the periodic update. We will, we're working on the details of it, but we plan to announce the application window soon and it will be like a 60-day or so application window. Applicants who want to change my property from single-family to multifamily or raise the height from four to six or decrease the height or change wording in a policy or any of those things would fill out an application form. They would be required to have a pre-application meeting with staff so we can go over it and make sure that we're, we're doing things the right way. They would have to fill out an environmental checklist under the State Environmental Policy Act. That is not an easy thing. That's kind of the barrier to entry. I think at the county, it's like a $4,000 application fee. We're going to go light on the funds, but heavy on the analysis to do this. And then staff will make a recommendation on which applications that we receive should advance into the environmental impact statement and then into consideration for the periodic update. You will have an opportunity to make a recommendation based on our recommendation and then the city council will have the final say on which applications advance. And I think the criteria for what should advance will be like a reasonable likelihood of success, given the amount of time and energy to analyze the particular application. And then also, many of these applications may overlap with the same areas that we're studying in the concentrated and the dispersed alternative. So, they almost don't really need to have a separate application in that, in that case. And we're planning on studying those applications that do advance in alternatives two and three, so they're captured in the environmental review process. And then through that process of developing a preferred alternative, we'll make the decision on whether to change that zoning or policy or whatever it is. We already have about six or seven inquiries that we've had on this and so, we'll have definitely some agenda items on that coming up. And then this is the last series here. Here's a area of the city next to a Bus Rapid Transit stop. You can see how the mixed urban zoning in pink is tightly focused on Evergreen Way and then it turns to 28-foot single-family. The lighter yellow is R2, the yellower yellow is R1. On the right side, that's an extract from buildable lands. The blue parcels are assumed redevelopable for a grand total of four units that you can fit in this square under current zoning. There's the height limit map on the left, 28 feet throughout the square and then seven to nine stories on Evergreen Way and then in. to nine stories on Evergreen Way, and then an aerial there showing you've got some critical areas and some different lot patterns. And here is how we might arrange the three alternatives for an area like this. You can see on the top, there's four units of potential growth in there now. With the concentrated alternative, Evergreen Way gets most of the action, but that transition area, that's nine and a half acres' worth, might accommodate another 100 units in a couple of buildings there. And then the dispersed alternative would allow that middle housing throughout, and that could accommodate potentially 300 units between the frame of the arterial and the middle housing zone outside of it. And that's our path to a preferred alternative. We're very close to setting the alternatives. Really appreciate all the feedback today, that's helpful, and we'll incorporate it. Then we're going to study the alternatives and develop a preferred. That's it, I'm glad I put this slide. We've got another dozen or so of topical things, in case we had more. If you've got another hour in you, certainly could, but that was the important parts of the presentation tonight.
Additional questions, commissioners? We have another opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here in person who wishes to offer comment? Mr. Nichols, please approach the mic.
I just want to mention, my name's Bryce Nichols, I'm from Delta neighborhood, that as we develop more larger complexes throughout the city, we should think about the disability community. For example, recommended to the council to maybe reserve first floor as units fill up for disabled people until they fill up, or increasing the allotment of disabled rooms that are installed as buildings are developed. Because a lot of the Section 8 housing goes to disabled people, and we struggle finding rooms on first floors, or almost never, I mean, someone gets the disability room, but it's hard to find it as a disabled person majority of the time. And I think that's my main point, yeah. Think about disabled people as things are developing.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, appreciate that comment.
Okay, well, I didn't plan on speaking. I am a property owner in Everett, and I have nearly a three-quarter acre lot, and I'm in the Holly area, by the way, and I have a little, there's a little cracker box house on there right now. And my husband and I wanted to, it's zoned R2, we wanted to do a duplex, and I was like, gosh, like, we've had it for a couple of years, and we kept going, this seems like a waste of almost three-quarters of an acre, that that's all we can do to this parcel. And so we went back and forth, and then we finally were going to pull the trigger, and I was like, well, I wonder if we can get an ADU back behind? And then the more research I did, and I might be wrong, was, well, if you condo the duplex, then you can have an ADU behind. And again, we felt like this was a waste of almost three-quarters of an acre. And so I decided, I went to an engage event on accident, thinking I was going to, thinking I was going to the open house for the 2024, and so, thank goodness, they directed me there. I went there, I talked to some great people, I chatted with Jennifer, who was lovely, who was the middle housing gal, and of course, I was like, what is that? What is that about? And she was, I explained, you know, my situation, and she really encouraged me to go to the city council meeting, which I've been to one now, and to come to this meeting, and kind of get involved. And I'm, you know, just sitting back, kind of watching, because my husband and I were going to pull the trigger, and now I'm like, I think we should wait, and just sit back, and maybe we have a better use for this. And ironically, I did a wetland delineation study. We did that before we bought the property, because there's a creek, but it's not on my property. But of course, I have these crazy setbacks, even though it doesn't, it's not on my property. And, you know, Jennifer mentioned, you know, there's variances, and she came from, I think, the city of Muckelteo, and so, you know, these are things that these guys need to hear from people like you, that you're willing to build housing, and it's expensive to dig ground and do this, but we're willing to do it, but let's maximize this dirt, and the whole, our whole entire strip there on 21st, they're all the same lot sizes. And what was interesting, when the change was done, I was playing with that little thing, moving it back and forth, seeing, we're exactly the same, nothing has changed. And these are huge lots, that we are, this three-quarters of an acre lots, basically, you get an R2 zoning. And so it's interesting for me, sitting back, listening to you guys talk about, how are we going to get these? How are we going to do this? And I'm like, oh my gosh, there's an entire area that has been, like, they did industrial next to me, they put all that in there for the paint field, but there's no recognition of this area that I feel like is, you know, primed for that. And then there's discounts, I was looking, and maybe I'm wrong, discounts for developers, but in the historic district is what I was reading, so I'm like, well, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't help us. That, all these things don't help us, because we're not in downtown Everett. And I'm like, well, what, you know, so I'm, we're hurry up and waiting, and I heard somebody mention, like, oh, what could we do? Do we stagger things? And then I'm like, well, once that duplex is built, you're not going to, I'm not ripping it down to put in more units. And so we're, you know, we're just trying to figure out what to do and make the smartest move. And then I'm like, and we talked about, okay, well, what if we could get four units or six units in there, the row houses, and condo them, you know, and figure that out, because those could eventually be sold, you know? And, you know, so we're just trying to sit back and figure out what to do and what's the best use. And I think that whole strip of property should be looked at differently right now, with what you guys are talking, what I'm hearing you're talking about, and mind you, I'm kind of ignorant to it all, and I'm new to this, but I think that's a really important thing. And then the ADU thing, I'd love to talk on that, because I think there's a lot of people who would love to do ADU things, but I also think that unfortunately, I've heard so many stories, and I've been privy to a lot of stuff with the code enforcement coming in, and having a heyday with some people. And I, I'm a real estate agent, I've been doing it for 30 years, and so I was having a hard time showing a client, getting a property a couple of years ago for my client, so I started looking at expired properties, and there was this adorable house, and it was expired, so I reached out to the owner, and she invited me over, but she said, my house has been condemned. And she was like 74, you guys. And I was like, what are you talking about? She's like, well, I bought the house this way, the downstairs was finished, but then my garage burned down, you know, and they had to rebuild it. And so the city came in, because her power box was panel box, electrical box was downstairs, and they're like, oh, well, you shouldn't have this built like this. And she's like, well, I bought it this way. Well, you can't have this. Either you need to go down two inches, dig out your floor, and go down, or raise your house two inches, and then you'll be okay, or you have to rip everything out, and in the meantime, we're going to condemn it. And she had to move out to her daughter's house in Snohomish, and she's like, I have no money, I'm doing this out of fly, I still have to make my mortgage payment. I was, all I could do is apologize to this lady. I was mortified that we are so worried about housing, but we're doing this, pounding our chest to code enforcement, to get somebody out, like, I got you. She's like, and she had, like, Fred from down the street build her a shed, and turns out that shed was over 200 square feet, she didn't know, you know? Because I went in the back, I'm like, what's going on with that shed? And she's like, well, it was 30 square feet larger. I have to laugh, because it's comical at this stage. She had him come and take a chainsaw and cut it, the whole end off, and it was exposed, and I'm like, what is that doing for the looks of our community? You know, she was just trying to abide, she's like, I just don't know what else to do, I have no money to tear it down. I'm like, okay, what are we, you know, I mean, I had to take my real estate agent hat, and the human hat came heavy on watching this go down, and I'm like, okay, if we want to do ADUs, how are we going to handle the code enforcement? And it was interesting, because bless Jennifer, when I was talking to her at the open house, she's like, we have chip programs for people like that. I'm like, why are not your departments talking then? Why was this lady allowed to be removed from her home, instead of code enforcement going, hey, 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 we got it, I got it, I can't unsee it, sorry, honey, let's get you some assistance, we have grants? Why was that not, why is that not happening? We're willing to get some, kick somebody out of their home, but yet we're fighting here, trying to figure out housing for people.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Would you state your name for the record?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my name is OJ Marston, Olivia Marston.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Okay. Thank you to the community members that offered that comment. Very much appreciate your perspectives. We're going to move on to item C, which is the planning commission bylaws. So we've, we've kind of had, we've gone a couple of meetings, just trying to make sure we caught everything, and I think we've finally done it. So if you all have an opportunity to review the version that has the changes made that we've discussed at previous meetings, is there any discussion, any further discussion on these bylaws changes?
Move to adopt. Second.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Upstate.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yassac?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Chair Chatters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, final item of the evening, is there additional new business that any commissioners would like to introduce?
Yes, I would love to request for a future meeting, for a staff presentation, and followed by a discussion of the commission regarding just what ways better we as a planning commission can help support small business.
I'm specifically thinking in terms of looking again at that home occupation ordinance that came through, I believe, not last year, 2021. In addition to also looking at front yard businesses, or like ADUs, but for businesses, basically. I know we have some stellar examples on Rucker of some of those kind of small businesses. In addition, I'd love to also have a staff presentation around just corner lots, and specifically around, like, how we can encourage more development of amenities in our neighborhoods, such as bodegas, and just other things that, as we discussed earlier regarding remote work, we need to start taking much more seriously than we once did. And yeah, that's it.
We will try to work on that.
Just adding to that, can we also, because I know there is a neighborhood business designation in there as well, zoning, can we also incorporate that into the analysis and conversation as well?
Commissioner Ballard?
Just a question on the, I'm sorry, are we going to speak? Yes, the, we'll think through some options on how to most efficiently prepare that information for you. We will be discussing economic development and commercial uses and stuff probably pretty soon, so it may make the most sense to fold that into that discussion, but we'll see what's available in the meantime, too. The study that was presented last, or at the last meeting by Peter Bachelot, is that, will that come back up? Are we done with that? Is that, do we? We were not, we were not planning to come back with that. We're, it's on its way to the council. There is a new version, we'll share you what the final result was, but we were not planning to come back with that. If there's questions, or if you'd like to continue discussing the issues, we'd be happy to, though.
Commissioner Ballard, if you have a commentary you want to offer on that, I would definitely like to hear it. I know that there are definitely community members discussing that presentation, so if it's something you want to think about for next meeting, you know, feel free to speak up on that issue.
Yeah, let me, it's all late tonight, so let me think about that.
If, Commissioner Lark?
You know, nevermind.
Okay, okay. It looks like we have completed additional new business? Okay, then with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.